I'm going to call this Lacey City Council meeting on August 8th, 2019, to order. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a published agenda. I don't see any additions. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moving second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have an agenda. First up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this council? Seeing none. Then next up is the Mayor's Report, and I'm going to break this into two motions. The first motion will be my recommendation to reappoint Councilmember Greenstein and Stedman to the left board. Is there any discussion? So their term is obviously up, and it's a, I think it's a two-year term, or is it a three-year term? Remember? Is it a three-year term? I'm not sure either.
I think it's two.
I think it's a-
I think I've only been on for two.
Okay, so I think it's a two-year term. It's one of those, usually when appointments, it's every year, but in this case, I think it's a two-year term, so.
Do we vote, or do we abstain from voting on that?
You can, you can vote for it. So is there, is there any discussion on my motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, Councilmember?
Yes, for the public, could we unpack what the left board is? I bet most people don't know.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to one of them, since they've been on it.
So, the left board is law enforcement and firefighters disability board, and so it takes care of their medical needs in retirement.
Yeah, so if there's ever a question or concern, it will go from this board and for them to make a, help to make a decision on that.
Things that are declined by insurance for different reasons, things that just aren't covered by their insurance, that kind of thing, come before this board for decisions.
It's a two-year term. Thank you. So is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion of reappointing Councilmember Greenstein and Stedman to the left board? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. They've been reappointed. And we also have, I'm going to be recommending the appointment of Sarah Horlocker as our youth representative to the library board. Sarah is here. You want to come up and introduce yourself real quick to this council?
Right here, okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Horlocker. I'm a junior at Timberline this year, and I'm really excited to be involved. It's awesome meeting new people that are a part of the city and have jobs here. And so far, I've loved everyone that I've met, and I'm just really happy and grateful for this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, I would move that we appoint Sarah. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moving seconded. All, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, and I know you already have some things you got to do tonight. So, this, thank you. Have a great night. So, under this, under this Mayor's Report, as I've been interviewing the new youth council members, youth representatives to the library board, the parks board, and to the historic commission, one of the things that we have been talking about is for the youth representative to look at doing a project during that time. For example, Sarah is actually was talking with, with our librarian at Lacey, from the Lacey Library, about helping her do some outreach on social media on the upcoming campaign to remodel the library. And so, the question I have is, and I've talked to the deputy mayor about this and our city manager, is this something that we should put into our policies and procedures so they know on the application that they'll, that they could be doing a project for the year? And one of the reasons why I've talked about wanting to do a project is to get them more engaged in these different committees, because what we have found in some cases is that they'll be appointed and then, you know, they maybe live, having busy lives, and they can disappear. And so, it's my feeling like if they're going to commit to the city, then it'd be great if they worked on something for the city and something that they could report out.
Didn't we, as our call, as we were working on-
Yes.
-the youth council, didn't we make that part of the policy and procedure for the youth council?
So, when we're on our first youth council coming up, they will, there'll be a seven-member council for youth. They'll elect the mayor and a deputy mayor, and one of the things that they'll be doing is coming up with a project that they will have to research and and come up with a budget and then present to the council for consideration. In this circumstance, it's not going to be a project like that, but it'll be something have to do with Lacey history or the parks. And so, if that's something this council can agree with, we can have it looked into our, the policies and procedures and come before us at a later date. Sound like thumbs up? Okay.
Can I say one other thing? Remember, I think you were on the council then, but there was a gentleman that did a major historical update to the, a presentation for the schools about the history of Lacey, and it was pretty darn spectacular, so it can be done, yeah.
Absolutely. No, I remember that. That was great.
Yeah, so I just really think this is a great opportunity to, you know, get a little more commitment from the youth representative and get them a little more involved in what they're doing, and so, great. Well, thank you for that. And that is the end of my Mayor's Report. City Manager?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have one item before you. Puna Clark is going to talk about lift station number 21 rehabilitation.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, the city staff would like to recommend approval for lift station number 21 rehabilitation project to low bidder Clark &amp; Sons Excavating. The low bid was seventy-two, $72,925.88. The engineer's estimate was $964,424.95. There are four bidders on this project. The working days is 180 working days, and we estimate that it's going to start in September. So, the project highlights include converting an existing vacuum prime station to a submersible lift station. We will also be installing an onsite generator again at this station, and this will provide power during power outages, and this would increase operation and maintenance efficiency during the power outage events. We will also be upgrading this lift station with standardized Lacey lift station items. And due to limited site area, temporary construction easement constraints, and parking limitations, this will make this project a site constricting project to build. But we've already reached out to the adjacent businesses there and notified them of the project and its construction that's upcoming. So I have included some pictures of the project location map. This lift station is located next to the Mayan Restaurant off of Pacific Avenue, near College Street. And here you can see the front view of the lift station. It includes a green fiberglass enclosure that houses the motors and valves. The electrical control panel you see there in white will be replaced. And then on the side view there, you can see a different view there. So, any questions?
I'd move to award Lacey contract number Public Works 2018-28 to low bidder Clark &amp; Sons Excavating Incorporated from Battleground, Washington, an amount of $772,925.88.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
So I have just a real quick thing. I'm curious why, and not that I mind, by the way, but the engineering bid is quite a bit higher than certainly the low bid, but even higher than the high bid. And was there, why would that be?
So, there were several items that were different, and our engineer estimate, we tried to account for the site constraints. As I mentioned, we have a temporary construction easement that limits the amount of time that we can use some of the area that we did get from the Mayan Restaurant. And the area that I'm talking about is actually, I'm going to go to the next slide here. So the tree you see near the entrance driveway, we got a temporary construction easement for the five parking spot, or six parking spots, starting from the tree, counting over the six parking spots. And so we included some higher costs to account for that time constraints, and that made our engineer's estimate higher.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Sure.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moving second to award this Lacey contract PW 2018-28 to the low bidder. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I did have one comment. Second place South Sound Contractors is from Lacey, so, second place, first loser.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. So next up is, is the Standing General Committees. First up is the Finance Committee, which met on July 23rd. We had just had a two-item agenda. Our first agenda item was giving us an update on our upcoming budget calendar. The city manager emphasized that this upcoming budget is going to have a heavier focus on public safety. There was a study that was done for the analysis of our current police station and their potential needs and possible expansion, or even the possibility of a new police station altogether to meet our growing community's needs. And so, that will be underway, and we'll see it in our upcoming budget. And we also discussed that we'll need to classify a little bit better are the public expenditures made so far in response to our homelessness situation, and he expects that the anticipated 2020 budget would be a better reflection of that public investment going forward. And so, the overall budget schedule is that our first budget workshop is planned for October 3rd, with the actual presentation of the budget on October 24th. And we are seeing the, hopefully the adoption of the 2020 budget by December 5th. And then, we had a discussion over workforce considerations. We really need to hire another full-time position within our finance department, and so a senior accountant position would really provide the city additional capacity for their increasing financial responsibilities and reporting requirements, which include our comprehensive annual financial report, as well as assisting with new governmental accounting standards and board statements. The city will also contract for services with a social service provider, or hire a new employee to work side by side with our police department, and again, in response to our homeless crisis that we are seeing. And that is my report. Next up is the General Government Committee. Deputy Mayor?
So the General Government and Public Safety Committee also met on July 23rd. There was one agenda item, and it involved the LMC 2.30 land use hearing examiner potential amendment. So Rick Walk, our Community and Economic Development Director, noted the role of the hearings examiner and discussed the possibility of city council's removal from the land use processing, process involving quasi-judicial matters. That's a potential, but we just wanted to discuss it. And so, he stated that the hearings examiner serves as a city official on quasi-judicial matters, which reviews and interprets land use regulations, conducts hearings, and then makes recommendations to city council on land use applications. And the city created the hearings examiner role in 1979, so it's been in existence a long time. The committee discussed at length the pros and cons of city council not being involved in quasi-judicial land use matters. And then, the members of the committee agreed that this discussion would benefit from a longer discussion with the full city council at a future work session. There's some obvious really advantages to having a hearings examiner, and, but then there might be some other reasons why it might not be as beneficial, but if that's the case, then the hearing comes before us, and so it makes a little bit different.
I think, I think, sorry, sorry, I think one of the biggest things that we always have a problem with when it comes to this issue in particular is if there's a land use issue going on and it's through the application, we always immediately get calls on it, because they want to talk to us. But if it's a quasi-judicial issue, we cannot even have the conversation with the person who's interested. And so, if we removed ourselves from that process, we could have those conversations. And so, this is a pro and con thing. We went back and forth about the benefits. It's obviously worth a discussion with full council, and let's see where it goes from there.
Yeah, we're not, we didn't really have any recommendation or anything for pros and cons. We just thought it would be worth discussing. And actually, that's my report.
Thank you. The Land Use Committee, Councilmember Cox?
Righty. Land Use Committee met on July 23rd, and our big topic that day was the comprehensive plan amendments for the Affordable Housing Strategy, which is getting a lot of attention around Thurston County. Ryan Andrews, our Community and Economic Development Planning Manager, provided an update related to the activities the city is currently engaged in with affordable housing. Pursuant to the Growth Management Act, the city can only amend the comprehensive plan once a year. And so, this update is the sole update that's going to happen for 2019. I don't want to just read through all of it. It is available online, but some of what we talked about in there were this team effort, working with all kinds of sectors of the community to try to come up with a series of things the city can do to encourage housing that is indeed affordable. Like, how can we get out of the way of this? Some of the groups that we worked with were Olympia Master Builders, Habitat for Humanity, the Housing Authority of Thurston County, Homes First, and several other organizations. Some of the strategies we talked about that are included in there are reducing fees for affordable housing, doing some zoning changes, permitting streamlining, which is like a pre-approved permit for building accessory dwelling units, city-funded infrastructure investments, increasing the city's general fund for social services, and providing city-owned property for nonprofits to build low-income housing units. My understanding, well, the public, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the Affordable Housing Strategy on June 18th, and they have approved a motion to recommend adoption of the strategy. So that will be coming before us soon, I think, right?
22nd of August.
22nd of August, okay. And that's my report.
Great. So, before we go on to Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports, I just really wanted to give a shout out to our Planning Commission, and Daphne is here from, representing the Planning Commission tonight. They do a lot of work behind the scenes, and as you know, they conduct our public hearings, which we know can be heated and full of passion. And they've had several of those recently, and so, I just want to thank you for your service and everyone on the Planning Commission. And you know, you're doing the deep dive work, and you don't get any credit hardly at all, and you get all the blame and, you know, people screaming, yelling at you, so we really, really, really appreciate everything you do.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would also like to say, myself, Carolyn Cox, and Lenny Greenstein, we're also on the Planning Commission, and we dove into, you know, the medical marijuana, legal, you know, plastic bags, you name it. So we told, we get it, and thanks for doing all the heavy lifting.
Thank you. So now on to Boards, Commission, and Committee Reports. I'm up first, but I do not actually have a report. The Mayor's Forum is taking this month off and didn't have a quorum for last month. I am for the Thurston, just for the Thurston County Chamber, I am, next Wednesday, the Korean consulate generals coming in, and I'm being, I'll be a part of a roundtable discussion about, you know, possible trade with, between Korea and Thurston County. And I will be giving a welcome on behalf of the elected officials from this area. So that is next Wednesday, and then the forum will be following right after that. But that is my report. Deputy Mayor?
So, I don't really have a report either. The Joint Animal Services Commission meets the end of this month. A lot meets next week, and the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency meets, doesn't meet in August. I do have a very brief thing about Thurston Thrives, not about the council part of it, but I'll be reporting to the Board of Commissioners through our Thurston Thrives Energy Efficiency and Climate Subcommittee, and what is being done in Lacey and the city's early actions for our regional climate mitigation plan. And then, along with that same idea, I've been asked to write a short article on how cities are reducing impacts of climate change and similar to what the article under my name at the Spokane Review last time. So, that I have to get out next week, so.
Well, thank you for that work on that. We really appreciate it. Councilmember Cox?
Okay, mine's going to be short and sweet tonight, too. The Regional Housing Council will meet on August 22nd, and we reported out last time on the most recent meeting. The Health and Human Services Council will meet on August 12th. Intercity Transit Authority did meet last night, and some highlights from that meeting were Mark Barkley, who's Assistant Director of the Department of Commerce, came with a gorgeous glass trophy or award for the 2019 Governor's Smart Projects Award for any intercity transit. So, that was really nice to receive and hear about that. We had a very brief, because there was no public to comment at our public hearing, but we did have a hearing on the draft 2019 Annual Report and 2019-2024 Transit Development Plan. We received an update on the progress of the construction on the Olympia Transit Center. Substantial completion is scheduled for early November, and they've tentatively scheduled the grand opening for Friday, November 22nd. And this will be midday-ish timeframe, so they're going to want us there. Get it on your calendars. We also heard a little bit about the service changes that are coming up in September. These are primarily adding to, like, starting a little earlier in the day and extending the hours on several routes as well. And so, there'll be information coming out shortly on that. And then we received a really exciting report on what's being called Intercity Transit's High Performance Corridor Demonstration Route. And this is essentially express service that will go from the Park and Ride Lot on Martin Way, and it'll zoom all the way out to Capitol Mall. It will not be stopping at the Lacey Transit Center or the Olympia Transit Center, but it's going to cut probably in half the time it would take to do a normal, normal run that way.
Sounds like a sports car by the way.
There you go. They hope to start this service in late October. Little Halloween treat there. And this will be a four-year project, I think, so they can really get some good data on how well it's working. And so, for the duration of this project, they are going to cover the fare box, and for this route, there will not be any charge for riders. So, that's the treat part of the Halloween launch of this, and we can call it trek or treat.
So where does it start?
It starts at the Lacey Park and Ride on Martin Way.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm sure there's a lot of feedback saying they need this service, or this service would be really helpful.
It is the most heavily traveled of intercity's transit routes, and yes, I mean.
Wonderful.
A lot of, lot of comment on that. Yikes. Thurston Mutual Planning Council is not meeting this month. The next meeting is September 6th. And I failed to report on the Thurston, July Thurston Thrives meeting, where there's no August meeting this month. But essentially, they're working on governance, trying to redefine what the mission of the actual coordinating council is and its relationship to the eight action teams that, and how they work together. So, more to come on that.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Hearn?
So I have a statement, a couple of statements, but if I could, Councilmember Cox, I'd comment on your, on your report on the intercity transit. I think I mentioned this in the past, and I just, I continue to, reading some things about, I think, Portland and other cities about fair, free public transportation. It seems to be a lot of benefits to it. Reduces, you know, increases usage and decreases cars, and the fares are relatively nominal part of the overall budget anyway. So, has the board been discussing this?
Yes, in fact, we had a planning session in July, and that is a topic under consideration. I think in intercity transit's case, fares make up approximately 10% of the budget. And one of the big obstacles that we have coming is we've, we're buying more buses to expand service, and some of the buses that we're currently in this fleet are aging out. The fare boxes that we have now on the older buses, they don't make anymore. And they're literally going to vendors like eBay to try to find parts to repair them. And so, the big, big consideration there is it would actually cost more to buy new fare technology than we would make up in actual fares for a long time. But there's still, you know, there's, but I mean, to your point, yes, so those are, yeah.
Great, great. Thank you.
So, we'll see.
We'll see. I have no official report tonight, but I did want to mention that a friend of mine who lives in Everett had, I didn't see him, but had the opportunity to see Chief SEMCO on Broadcast News a few days ago, commenting about our policies and whatnot, and he said, he said he did a great job and really defined our policies regarding the encampment situation, and it was really a positive report. So, thank you for the good PR for that.
Great. Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Action Council I reported on last month, it doesn't meet until the end of the month. The Lacey South Sound Chamber had its forum just this past Wednesday at St. Martin's. And the speaker, the, it was centered, centered on the OMB, OMB, Master Builders. We're thrilled to have Angela White, Executive Officer, and Erin Hall, Director of Government Affairs from the OMB. And they discussed housing policies and regulations and- And they discussed housing policies and regulations in Thurston County. And it was very informative. It was, the city manager, Scott Spence, was there as well. He could tell you that Lacy's name was dropped like 20 times as a good partner in trying to alleviate the housing crisis and the average median house being, you know, way up there. I want to say it's well in the $350,000 range now. And so, trying to alleviate the inventory shortage and et cetera. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that at all? City manager?
I did suggest it could be Lacy Master Builders, but they wouldn't take me far. No, but it's nice to have a partner like OMB. I know Ricks Group has worked heavily with them. They're very supportive of our accessory dwelling unit program, which we're in the process of actually getting architec. We have some preliminary plans that we're working on, so it's nice to have a partner like that. But they too are trying to resolve or address the issue of affordable housing. And so, it's good to have a partner in the building industry to kind of help us work on this.
Great. And then, just a couple of other announcements. Dollar Express ribbon cutting is tomorrow from 12 to 1, a new chamber member. And the annual dinner and auction is denim and diamonds on September 28th at Lacy Corporate Center, or Lacy Community Center. Sorry about that. And that's my report on the chamber. The phone timed out here. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee doesn't meet until the 14th, that date was changed. But the Board of County Commissions did reply to a letter that we sent off on behalf of the SWAC with the transparency and communication breakdown between RFP and the Solid Waste Management Plan. Their letter is essentially saying that it's due to committee turnover. And I know that can't be, that has the furthest thing from the truth. I know Lenny sat on the committee before me and we're there every meeting. And so, we'll see where it goes from there. But they meet on the 14th, that is my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Zeeman?
The Economic Development Council doesn't meet until September 25th, and that is all.
Well, just like that, we are through our agenda. We will be adjourning to a work session. We're gonna discuss our, the Regional Housing Council and the silicon-malbon annexation. We'll give an update about that as well. So, we'll be adjourning to that work session. But for everyone else, you keep it classy, Lacy, and I'll call us mean adjourned.